Welcome to March 6, 2012 Work Session, Bowling Board of Commissioners. I have a couple items to discuss today. And we'll start with Mr. De Febo introducing our Links Across America Wadsworth Golf Foundation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Today, we're honored to have with us Mr. Leon McNair. He's the president of the Wadsworth Golf Foundation. At the last work session, we made a decision to attempt to reduce the deficit at all three golf courses and move forward with plans to try to improve our golf product as well as to increase play. As we talked about over the last couple of meetings on the golf subject, inherent in any solution to golf is the need to expand the number of people who play golf and to increase the rounds of golf being played. We learned that across America, and I'm sure Leon will tell you that, is golf is a sport that is under some stress and is attempting to increase its product primarily to the youth. Mr. McNair is here to explain about the Wadsworth Foundation, about the First Tee Program, and also how he can help us, if any, the commission so wishes to be involved in examining how we might grow golf and possibly repurpose Riverview for that need. I give you Leon McNair.
Thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome.
The Wadsworth Foundation was established in 1997 and up through 2008, provided grants to various organizations throughout the country. First Tee chapters, junior, adult, and family golf programs, handicapped and therapeutic programs. We did some small facility development. And the fifth area was providing funding for various golf associations, foundations, other foundations, and universities. And when I mention universities, for example, the University of Alabama does a great deal of research in adaptive golf equipment for those individuals that are challenged and have handicaps. And we periodically had provided grants for that research. I came onboard with the golf, Wadsworth Golf Foundation in 2005. And I had, my prior history was 38 years in public golf west of Chicago. I had also worked in my collegiate years for Mr. Wadsworth Golf Construction Company and learned all about what's underground, so to speak. But when I came onboard with the Wadsworth Foundation, we got more and more calls, more and more requests for help in getting young people on golf courses, providing funding for access, asking us if we could help them maybe develop a three-hole course or something. And so, as Mr. Wadsworth and I kept talking about this problem, that affordable golf for youth in this country didn't exist, he mentioned, he said, "Well, maybe we ought to go and build short courses." And the problem there, though, the National First Tee had tried that back in the '99, 2000, 2001, and so on. They built some in Augusta, Fort Smith, Arkansas, Alpharezo, et cetera, and usually were six-hole projects, but they became too costly. The primary reason they were too costly is they spent too much money in bricks and mortar rather than in the facility itself. The golf courses, though, were very nice, but the First Tee of Augusta, for example, has to raise about a half million dollars every year just to balance the bottom line. Fort Smith, Arkansas, $350,000, $325,000, just to balance the operation. Now, Augusta is very simple. They have the Masters, so on Tuesday night, they close the driving range and they have a major hoedown. And they can easily net $500,000 that night, and it's taken care of. So, my point to Mr. Wadsworth in this is that we do not get, we need to go out and recruit partners from the golf industry to be successful. We need architects. We need golf course builders, other than Mr. Wadsworth's company. We need company suppliers, Toro, John Deere Golf, Club Car, Whittick Golf for Range Equipment, Four Reservations for Computer Technology, Tee Time Systems, Internet Marketing, et cetera. And so, with that in mind, we began to research that. And as it turned out, we launched Links Across America in 2009 and began working on some interest from various organizations that were interested in potentially doing a project. As of today, we have 51 partners. We have 19 architectural firms. We have 11 golf course builders. We have 21 other companies, the Toro Company, John Deere Golf, Club Car, Four Reservations, Whittick Golf, Wilson, et cetera. We also have two golf course management companies, one in the southeast and one from Chicago area, Golf Visions Golf Management Company. And why they're important and very key to this whole thing, to go across the country and build short courses and not have them sustainable doesn't work. So, Golf Visions out of Chicago, once we assemble all the facts and figures and numbers, we supply this information to them and they prepare the first year's budget and 10-year pro forma for city councils, for First Tee boards, et cetera. And this is, this initiative, we completed two courses, two short courses in 2010. Our third course in 2011 is being completed now for the city of Fort Worth, Texas. This year, we're going to do six to seven. Next year, eight to nine, and the following, 14, about the same number. Mr. Wadsworth is in his 54th year of building golf courses throughout the United States. In the early '90s, he was considered the number-one golf course builder in the country. He's built for every architect, every architect that's listed of the 19 firms on our list, Nicholas being one of them. I was just in West Palm Beach two weeks ago, and Jack Nicholas' Nicholas Design is contributing all the design work for a nine-hole par three we're doing for the First Tee of the Palm Beaches down there. But over Mr. Wadsworth's career, and certainly over my career, we have, we agree totally on two points. First of all, golf courses, from the time the game of golf was invented, have been and will continue to be an important classroom, especially for our young people. Number two, in our society today, there is not a better sport than the game of golf that teaches the lessons by which to live life: honesty, integrity, courtesy, respect, perseverance, et cetera. Therefore, Mr. Wadsworth is committed to the belief that golf is a good and powerful teacher and believes that if we can get more young people in this country playing the game of golf, it's going to play a significant role in our society of building stronger I personally believe that if we could bring a First Tee chapter to the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky, and with that, get the national school program going in your elementary schools and trying to focus initially with those elementary schools in the Riverview Golf Course area, and we could make Riverview the headquarters of the First Tee of Bowling Green, Kentucky, and at the same time remodel the golf course into an executive short course, meaning, and when I say executive, a good example would be maybe five par threes, three par fours, and one par five. So, that would be a par of approximately 32 or something like that. And with a minimum of four to five sets of tees on every hole. And one thing I suggested as we were out at Riverview today, I posed the question or the idea to Bob Jeffers and all the golf course personnel, that maybe you don't have any tee boxes, but you have a huge area and you have the big bald tee markers, and they're moved every day within the proximity of that yardage plate that spells, that relates to that mark, to those tee markers. But they're moved and moved around. You disperse your wear. Think about if you had five par threes, and you just had a postage-stamped tee as big as this area right here, and you had significant play and First Tee participants, et cetera. Within a couple of years, that'd look like just a brown box. But with moving the tee markers, you disperse your wear, you keep it terrific, great quality, and so on. And we have already done that in the first golf course that we built for the Dundee Park District west of Chicago, and it works. So, that's just one idea. But I believe if these things could be done in conjunction with bringing the First Tee here, within 10, 10 to 15 years, Bowling Green, Kentucky would even be a stronger community than it is now. I have no doubt about it. I've worked, been involved with First Tee Chapter in Aurora, Illinois since 1997, and I can see, I've seen it happen, I've seen it be a tremendous factor of bringing different ethnic groups together and so on. And out of this, you'll be producing some tremendous leaders, future leaders, and some of them that could lead and be involved in later years right here in Bowling Green, Kentucky. So, how can the Wadsworth Foundation help? Our first, if we got the green light to move ahead, we would first assign David Johnson, golf course architect from Atlanta, Georgia, to this project. He does phenomenal work, and I am very confident that he would be the right fit for the job. And we would first have David make a site visit, meet with a lot of the staff, tour the golf course, and like we did today, and we've come up with some thoughts even today about the remodel and what would be work, where the driving range would be, which would be a central location, and so on. But we'd have him make a site visit and then begin preparing preliminary plans. After some changes and redos on the plans and so on, that always happens, we will end up with a consensus that this is the plan. And for there, from that point, he would prepare a master plan, a color rendition of the hole, nine holes, driving range, and so on, which would be important for board meetings, fundraising events, et cetera. Number two, we would assist in getting Al Aringoni, who is your regional director from the National First Tee, to come here to Bowling Green and meet with everybody and basically outline the plan and the procedures you need to take to bring about adding and creating a First Tee chapter here in Bowling Green, Kentucky. When I first called Joe O'Brien down at the National First Tee, I expected I was going to get the, we have a moratorium, because I knew they had. They've had a moratorium on creating First Tee chapters for the past two years. The reason is, they want to try to make their existing chapters better. But he informed me that, after we just talked about it, and I explained some things about, and I talked about Riverview and its great location as far as the inner city and being able to capture some of the inner-city young people and getting them involved in a program like this. And they did some research, and they got back to me and said they agreed, they thought Bowling Green, Kentucky was a great market, and they would consider creating a chapter here in Bowling Green. So, that was a huge positive step, that I was very happy that it turned out that way. But Al would come and go through that process and so on. I've given each of you a sheet regarding some of the things that are necessary to establish a First Tee, all about developing a board of directors. Also, there's a section in there, I gave, I give you an example of what the city of Aurora, Illinois does and the local park district as well to provide some base money, I would say, for the First Tee Chapter. In other words, if all else fails, they have a bad year fundraising-wise or whatever, there is a, there is a nest egg there that at least can take care of maybe the salary of the program director and everything can continue to function. And so, you don't miss a beat and crumble because of a lack of funding. And we have found that in Aurora very, very important, and it's worked beautifully. And also, the park district as well as the city contribute other wonderful things to make it work. The Wadsworth Foundation, then, once, once we have a plan, we would then have David Johnson work up a cost estimate on what he believes it's going to, going to cost to do the renovation and the new driving range, et cetera. And at the same time, I would meet with all the golf course personnel and we, and maybe some from the other courses as well, a think tank session to come up with the estimated rounds for the first year of operation, the breakdown of those rounds, the rates, because when it comes to youth, we have to be sure the youth rate is affordable. That's paramount. Now, the senior rate, the adult rate, obviously, that can be higher, but we have to be true to our mission. We would get into range income projections, other areas, since we're going to have a First Tee Chapter there, we would get into the fees and the amount of income that may be generated from their programs and so on. And all of this would be fit in, the expense of maintaining the golf course, et cetera. And we would prepare, once we have all this information, this would go to Chicago, to Golf Visions, and they would prepare first year's budget, 10-year pro formas, and I mean, these are documents, all the breakdown, staffing, everything, the roadmap for operations to make it sustainable and successful. Finally, the Wadsworth Foundation would contribute $250,000 to this project, since it's a nine-hole project. And that would be paid over five years. So, that's pretty much, I hope that's been informative, and I'm sure many of you may have some questions and so on. I'd be happy to answer any thoughts that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. McNair. Slid, do you want to start us on this one?
Sure. If I can, I'm an easy sell on this project, I'm going to tell you that upfront, and I don't think anybody who hears that's going to be surprised by it. And I'm going to start with where I think the opponents of doing something like this are going to start. There's nothing I enjoy more than taking on the first argument right away. And so, the last sentence you said talked about $250,000. You talked about a payment plan over five years of $250,000. And so, my question to you is, in a guesstimate, because I know there's no way to be exact about it, what do you think the city of Bowling Green is going to have to invest in order to bring this project to minimal success? And is there a, is there a price difference in bringing the project to great success?
Well, let me, let me start with the success parts.
Great.
Let's start at the back end. We were out there today and we, because Bob Jeffers had sent me many topos and big colored prints and so on of the property and so on, and I was having a heck of a time trying to come up with a three-hole loop and a six-hole. And one of the reasons that's important is, within a nine-hole operation, we try to do this, have a three-hole loop and a six-hole. In other words, hole one may come out and three comes in, and then four goes out, and you, the ninth hole comes in. Or it could be one through six, go, you know, and then you have seven, eight, nine. Why that's important is, when you have especially a First Tee Chapter that's going to be involved, think about this, all summer long, there's going to be programming going out there with First Tee, five days a week. So, when you have a three-hole loop, you can have the First Tee using holes, those three holes for programming purposes, plus portion of the driving range and the putting green and so on, and then also your atrium there between the cart storage and the pro-shop area for life skills education. So, what happens is, is you have a rotation going on from station to station throughout the entire time, programming time, every day. In the meantime, you have six holes that you can have your regular customers utilizing, revenue generating to maximize dollars, and you can price it 12 holes for the price of nine. Or three rounds. Or three rounds and a discounted rate if you go 18, compared to if you were playing nine and nine. So it's all about sustainment. It's all about revenue generation and maximizing every bit from your operation. Now, today, we went round and round on this for most of the afternoon. It is, to do that with your current layout, in my opinion, and I think we all agree, it would be very costly because of the other factors it's gonna run into as far as irrigation and so on. But we can centrally locate that driving range, right outside the building. Maybe make some changes with, shorten it up hole number one or something, and really add some features to your existing nine-hole course and shorten it up and so on, where it has basically the holes that I mentioned, five par threes, three par fours, and a par five. And then there's an area to the right, over there, where the white picket fence is. And on the south side of that, I think we can get into par three, maybe going out, and another par three on the other side of the picket fence and the road coming back, where we can get at least two holes for programming, used by other beginners when it's not being used, maybe for a first tee chapter or a junior program situation and so on. I even, in looking at it again when we are leaving tonight, or late this afternoon, I wouldn't be surprised David Johnson's gonna figure out that we can get three holes in, three par three holes, which would be perfect, perfect. And the greens wouldn't have to be real big, it wouldn't, it'd be a heck of a lot more inexpensive than if we go the other direction and just start tearing up things and, you know, and to try to basically redo the golf course to get three and six. We feel this is the most economical way to do it. Regarding your first question, what estimate do I have that the city might have to spend? And that would be after our 250? I'd say you'd have to plan at least on $600,000 to be safe. That means the project's gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of at least 850. And that's a good case scenario, but my one fear is regarding all this, and it has been from the start, is the irrigation part of it. Because you've got a lot of rock and so on, but I think there's one positive in this, with five par threes, and we discussed this, five par threes, we do not need single-row irrigation going from tee to green. We need the irrigation in the teeing area, and then up by the green, we may have one or two heads coming off the front part of the green to really be able to irrigate properly the approach into that green. And then on the three par fours and the par five, we would have a single-row irrigation. If the roughs get a little brown in August, that's gone. So that's...
So with the majority of that money that we're talking about, not the 250K, I have a handle on what that would be, of the 600K that is just an estimate at this point that you're putting out, is the majority of that money for irrigation?
It's gonna be a good chunk. I can't answer that. David Johnson will be able to get a better handle on that.
So, in your experience, and I know it's immense, when you talk about watering, irrigating greens and tee boxes, how often in a day's time is that irrigation occurring, on average? I understand that's gonna fluctuate with weather. We don't irrigate when it rains. We might irrigate more when it's 105 as opposed to when it's 71, but on average, how often are we irrigating a green or a tee box on those holes where you talked about not installing a single-line irrigation?
You would be irrigating those greens same as you would the par five and the par fours.
Which is two times a day?
There's no difference, just because...
Understand. But what I'm trying to get at is, is there a way to reduce the $600,000? I had the fortune of growing up in the golf business. Now, I'll tell you, I was a kid from the wrong side of the tracks, and if not for an uncle, I would've never known what the game was, because it was out of reach financially for me and my family to ever touch it. But part of growing up in the golf business means that I drug more hoses and more sprinklers than I ever care to remember. And it may be something that is considered not as convenient in the golf business today, but I know that you can run small courses by doing that. My overall question, related to all the questions I've been asking thus far, is, is there a way to minimize that cost if irrigation is our biggest chunk and we're not going to run single-line irrigation on par threes? We're gonna irrigate the greens, we're gonna irrigate the tees. Is there a way to do that where we don't have automated irrigation and we all have to work a little bit harder pulling hoses and pulling sprinklers to get it done?
If you do not have automated irrigation, I think you're making a huge mistake.
Okay.
Because you will run your labor budget into the ground. And with some of the pricing that we may be able to receive from maybe Rainbird, certainly from Toro, regarding the price on the heads and the swing joints and the control boxes for automated irrigation, you gotta have it. And our discount with Toro is 65% on the heads, the swing joints, and the control boxes. It doesn't include the pipe or the wire, but if the main lines are good, we may not have a tremendous expense in that area.
Thank you for your interest. I may have more, but I'll stop now.
I just wanna make it clear for the citizens watching, your organization's gonna contribute a total of how much money to this project?
To this project? $250,000.
Total. So I don't want the citizens to think that we're getting $250,000 each year for five years. So we're getting $50,000 per year for five years.
Now, you got an addition, though. For example, the architect. The architect receives no remuneration for all the preliminary plans, for his site visits during that time, for doing the master plan, color rendition, and so on. Zero. That's his contribution, which is significant. We're probably gonna need an irrigation designer on this project, which would be Larry Rogers out of Denver. He's listed on our list of 51 partners. I really don't know what his annual fee for doing a nine-hole golf course is, but I would guess, doing the irrigation plan for a nine-hole golf course, driving range, short game areas and so on, is certainly in the neighborhood of $50,000, and all the pump stations and all that requirements and so on. His fee for doing this project will be $2,500. Our partners bring a great deal of savings to the table. That's what makes this hum and really work. I mean, yes, our money is quite important as well, but it's partners. Witit Golf, if you needed, and you may not, based on what you currently have in your golf operations, but if you needed a new tee-time system with four reservations, internet marketing, point-of-sale, and even some food and beverage, those software packages, four reservations provides all four of those software packages at a dollar a year for any projects of ours. And they will help get any computer hardware in at cost. Witit Golf, there's discounts on range equipment, range picker. Club car could provide the utility vehicle to push the range picker. These are all discounted items of further savings. So, just trying to present the, you know, the whole picture.
I have another question. On this national school program, you said 1 to 9 schools, 3,150 per school, 10 to 19, 3,050 per school. Is that an annual fee or just a one-time fee, depending on how many schools we have in?
Great question. As far as I know, it's an annual, it's a one-time fee that lasts for a period of years, and what that fee is for is primarily the snag equipment, which is, and there'll be enough snag equipment to handle a class of 44 students, which is significant. And I don't know whether it's 10 years or somewhere in that neighborhood, only where the equipment would have to be replaced because it's basically worn out.
Where's your corporate headquarters? Where are you located?
Plainfield, Illinois, which is about 35 miles west of Chicago, a little southwest
So, these partners that you speak of, architects, engineers and so on, who's gonna pay them? I mean, they're not gonna fly in to Nashville and then drive from Bowling Green, I mean, from Nashville to Bowling Green and go out to Riverview. Who pays them?
You mean as far as the contractor? The builder that's gonna build it? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, you mentioned earlier...
I'm confused.
You mentioned earlier that...
Oh, you mean like David Johnson?
Yes.
The architect?
Yes.
The initial site visit, the Wadsworth Foundation is paying that. And if he has to make another one and we feel it's critical, we will pay it again. The architects do not receive any money until we go to bid, and that's a cost of the project. And they do everything else at 50% of their normal rate.
Based on, excuse me, based on your visit to Riverview and what you've seen, and I realize that you're not gonna be driving a bulldozer or whatever, what kind of timeframe would you think we are talking about in rearranging or the renovation of Riverview? With, and I realize there's a lot of ifs out there with that question, but give me an idea.
Well, as far as construction, beginning construction, you could go as soon as next spring maybe. But that, again, like you say, depends on a lot of items, funding, et cetera, et cetera. If not, I would think certainly by '14. The, depending on, probably four to five months. And when we go to bid, the architect has to prepare the bid documents and the construction drawings, and these become a legal document, and that's why the remuneration kicks in at that point, at 50% their normal cost. On these documents, right on the front cover, there is a statement that this is a Links Across America initiative of the Wadsworth Golf Charities Foundation, and the mission is to provide affordable golf for youth across this country. And we go on to say that basically, we expect the contractors to have a sharp pencil, in essence. In other words, that there is, at the back part of the document, there's a net, there's a subtotal on the cost of the project, and there is a line item for the Links Across And you never know what's gonna happen there.
Where are some of your closest first-tee programs from Bowling Green?
Pardon?
Where are some of the closest first-tee program, successful first-tee programs from, near Bowling Green?
Well, you got one in Louisville, Owensburg, Kentucky, Nashville, but that's connected to the Tennessee... but that's connected, connected to the Tennessee Golf Association. Yeah. But those are, I don't know whether Paducah has a chapter or not, I'm not sure.
That's all I've got, Ms. Mayor.
I guess when I look at, at the program that, that you're presenting in, it, it sounds interesting to, to follow through with, but when I look at any, this is a nonprofit operation that's set up to provide affordable golf for youth, as I understand it. Am I accurate there?
Yes.
Generally, when there's a program that has a component that we're speaking of, there's usually a, a local champion who drives that goal. This is, we're here today kind of as a reaction rather than a proactive step in that, in that fashion. And I guess what I'm afraid of is that, well, this is a program that we're gonna try and hope that it takes off. Do you, do you see the need for that, that champion in order to drive the program?
I think a major key to this whole thing is establishing a First Tee chapter in Bowling Green, Kentucky. I certainly do.
How, how do we define success? How does First Tee or Wadsworth define success?
Well, I, I alluded to it earlier that I truly believe that if a First Tee chapter is established here and the headquarters is at Riverview, and think, and improvements are made there, and so on, I think it's going to help feed and grow the businesses at your other golf courses. That's point one. Point two, if a First Tee chapter is involved, then you're gonna, and it may, it may seem hard to understand this without being around a, a First Tee chapter and seeing the young people speak after being involved in the program for two or three years. Of all nationalities, I'm convinced you will have leaders come out of that program. Leaders that may end up eventually being a part of Bowling Green, Kentucky, sitting right up here. And also, obviously, at other businesses and so on. It is incredible what these young, what this program and the life skills education and the nine core values are all about. But what brings about the character transformation in these young people is that they have the opportunity to tee it up and apply the nine core values. That's the key. And that's why we're getting so many calls from chapters all over the country because of golf for youth is not affordable. They're having trouble getting the young people on the golf courses and so on. And many times, their budgets are such that they can't subsidize the golf for the young people. And so on, so. I think it's a win-win for your community personally.
So in addition to the character building that, that golf provides through your nine
Exactly.
keys, the other part of that is the numbers that we're driving to the other courses. Do you have an, an experience line or, or experience from other courses to show, or other opportunities where you made this presentation to show how much it's increased?
I don't because we're, we're, we're in our younger years. You know, we, we're just into, you know, 2012 is, is basically our third year of construction and new facilities, so. But the first facility that we did for the Dundee Park District west of Chicago, their, Tom Moser, the director of the Dundee Park District, is convinced this is, this is just gonna help feed not only the existing course where Randall Oaks, where this facility is, but their other golf course, Bonnie Dundee, within the community. I mean, they're, they have no doubt that that's gonna help. As far as how many rounds that these, our two facilities that we did in ten basically played last year was over, let's see, almost 15,000.
Increased play 15,000? I'm sorry?
Yeah, and they're, they're not, one's a three-hole, and the other one is a, a par-three, four-hole, five-hole, par-three. And the reason that plays that way is the fifth, the fifth green can be that play is, the chipping green plays as the fifth green. So, in the rotation, so that can, they can go around it and play nine holes.
And that's a new course?
Yes.
Okay. One last question, and then I think Ms., when you talk about the 50,000 a year, is there an obligation for the city to expend a certain amount of money along with that time? Or is there an obligation for a period of time? Say at the end of five years, we've got three kids playing a week, and that's about it, is, and, you know, we're just a colossal failure. What happens then? I know you don't expect that, and I don't mean to imply that. I, I look at things from worst-case scenario and try to build up to a case.
Well, our funding is gonna come over five years. I'm assuming you're probably, would be the same. So, in that process, it could be that you're gonna need a construction or a bridge loan, bridge-type loan or something like that. So that the construction company gets paid, the architect gets paid, et cetera, when the project is completed. Right?
Okay, I'm, I'm not following you, but go ahead.
So, if that is, proves to be a problem here in Bowling Green, that you needed to find a funding partner, somebody, a bank, that would take out this type of scenario.
I don't think I've asked my question correctly. What, what is our obligation to the Wadsworth Foundation to continue if at the end of this five years, per se, we find it not successful here in town? What, what obligation do we have? I, I didn't ask that correctly, I apologize.
Okay. If that was the case, we would expect a refund of our $250,000. Reason is, we would need to put that money into other projects.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
And it would be a simple agreement. Not necessarily something that we gotta have.
I understand.
Yeah.
I just need to verify, and I think it's because this school's showing us that we're gonna be charged per school to set up this First Tee chapter. When I envision paying per school, I'm envisioning more or less an after-school program. And I'm seeing stands, I'm thinking, Boys and Girls Club. Is this gonna compete with this organization? Is it gonna work hand-in-hand? How do you plan on getting children to this facility? And get them to golf? Is it gonna be up to the parents? Or do some of these facilities provide transportation? How can we make, if we go with this, what's gonna make it successful?
Well, the first, alls I can tell you is the national school program right now is very successful. Everywhere, we just instituted it in the city of Chicago.
So does children go after school?
No.
During school?
This is during class, in PE.
Okay.
Physical education.
So you have to work it out then with the school system?
This, yes.
Okay.
But it's a nationally recognized program and and it's taught. It's taught through the PE teachers.
And not in all cases do the children have to be transported to the actual facility in order to participate in that program. There are multiple things you can do related to golf, just like any other sport, that you can do off-site. What, in, in a lot of aspects, what it does is it provides a curriculum to be able to teach golf, to whereas in most schools, they roll out balls and teach them how to play basketball. They teach them how to play kickball. And, and this is going to be teaching them how to play something much greater than a game.
We, let me explain further the benefit of the school program. In addition to providing an introduction into the game of golf and getting the kids involved in the whole life skills education part of it. The school program provides, is, is, is the feeder to the summer program in Riverview. And it's quite likely that in some of the classes, you're gonna have children, and I, and in Illinois, we have the Illinois Lunch School Program, which indicates a child in need. Any of those children that are involved in the Lunch School Program that are, wanna participate in the First Tee Program are scholarshiped in. And alls they pay is a very minimal registration fee, like maybe $10. And they can participate and have all the benefits of participating in the First Tee Program. And our chapter the past two years is in the National First Tee A B Honor Roll Program. We finished second, and last year we finished third in the country of all the chapters. And of those kids that were a part of the A B Honor Roll, 36% of those, that number were kids that we scholarshiped in. It was phenomenal. Just phenomenal. And we're teaching golf in forty, forty schools in Aurora. We have this program, forty schools. And we started this long before the first, the national school program even existed with the First Tee. And we were teaching it one of two ways. Through our professional staff or through PE teachers that had a passion for the game and so on. And we developed a teaching manual for them. And they, alls they had to do is follow that. And it was very simple. And then added the life skills component. And it's worked beautifully. But it's also very costly because we're paying our own people to do it. But that's, that's the beauty in the national school program. You have an upfront fee. But, you know, you've got maybe 10, 12 years before there's any change in that fee.
Any other questions, your comments from the board?
I do.
Yes, sir.
I, I think that one of the things that, that strikes me is, is I read the preliminary documents, is, as I listened to the discussion, is that Wadsworth and the First Tee is not here to save the city's golf program. What we're trying to accomplish, I think what Wadsworth and what the First Tee Program is trying to accomplish is different than what our focus may be right now. But I think if we're willing to think a little bit into the future and a little bit outside of the box, we can see where the First Tee Program and Wadsworth is in a position to help us in the long term, turn around our golf program. We, it, it, I, I can't help but during this discussion, and, and some of you are gonna groan because I'm gonna mention the skate park. But when we mentioned the skate park years ago, I can't tell you how many people said, but there aren't any skaters in Bowling Green. And anybody wanna take a field trip down to Roland Blaine Park right now, that park, when I passed it this morning, was filled. Not this morning, on the way to this meeting this afternoon, it was filled. When we built the soccer complex, and when I say we, the city, I was not with the city at the time that the soccer complex was built, the, the general criticism was, but there aren't any soccer players. Try to shut down the soccer complex now on a Saturday afternoon and see what kind of mutiny happens, happens in this building. And, and so, I, I can't help but think of projects like that where it's easy, I believe, to, to brush off the idea that it's going to cost money and say, well, because it's gonna cost money, then, then, then there's, there's too big of a risk to achieve a reward. And I just, I don't believe that. There is not a person, in, in my opinion, in my estimation, you are unlikely to find a person in this very room that at some point hasn't looked at a young person walking the streets of Bowling Green and thought to themselves, why aren't they involved in something more positive than what they're doing? And the reality is, because in the city of Bowling Green, we don't have affordable ways for young people to get involved in activities where there's going to be an adult. Sure, you can go to a park and you can shoot baskets anytime you want. You, you can go to a, a tennis court and, and hit the ball over the net by yourself anytime you want. But rarely are there opportunities for young people to be involved in some activity where there is an adult who is expecting them to be there, an adult who's going to hold them accountable for being there, and an adult who's going to teach them something that goes far beyond the game of golf or the game of tennis or the sport of skating. And I, I, I think that there's a way to meld these two projects into one, but, but it's gonna cost money to do it. We, we've made the first step, I believe, into reducing the deficit that we run in the golf division. We're, we're on a path to do that. But it's gonna cost us money in, in order to get there. It, it's, nobody can, I've said this before, nobody says, I wanna live in the town that cuts the most services. Nobody says that. It, I've, I've never talked to anybody in this town who's moved here and said, boy, I came here because, man, you, you run a efficient Section 8 program, and I really like the way that you've achieved results by cutting employees there. Nobody says that. They, they come and they wanna locate in towns because we offer quality of life events, and those things cost money. And it's interesting to me that we might balk at the fact that Wadsworth and the First Tee is offering $50,000 per year T is offering $50,000 per year over a five-year period, but not so long ago, we were considering a proposal of $10,000 a year to operate golf courses. And, and it, it's, it's not lost on me, the difference between the two, and it's not lost on me, that I believe that we improve our city in a multitude of ways. And one of those ways, in my opinion, is through the Parks Department and to, to, to try to take on this project. We're, we're at the very preliminary stages of doing so. But we accept grants in on a regular basis where we have to have matching monies, and those monies come nowhere near $250,000, whether it be over a five-year period or not.
Mr. Fable?
Let me make sure I understand. We've got two entities here. We've got First T, who operates the First T program, which is designed to encourage youth golf. And then there's the Wadsworth Foundation that provides funding for either building or upgrading facilities, so that First T will have a place to play. Is that correct?
But understand, the Wadsworth Foundation is only the Wadsworth Foundation. We have no connection to the National First T.
Okay.
Other than, we totally agree that it is a tremendous program. Mr. Wadsworth has experienced it. He's a national trustee for the National First T. But we're not partners.
Right.
Okay? But we feel that if you would have the opportunity to bring a First T chapter here and establish a First T chapter in Bowling Green, it would be to this community's advantage to do that, without question. I'm, and out at Riverview, if there was a First T chapter there, you're now going to have a new driving range facility, which you don't have many in Bowling Green, Kentucky. I truly believe that facility, and then have it be remodeled, to be a haven for new people interested in taking up the game. That is only going to help feed your other golf courses. You're going to have an opportunity to create new customers. And at the same time, because of the First T involvement in improving the character in young people, you're going to have a, you're going to, it's going to play a role in strengthening your community, without a question, without question. And that's what we totally believe. That's what we're totally committed to. I've experienced it. I've worked with First T. I know what it can happen. Is it easy? You need a strong board, representing all your community leaders, from as many possible businesses in this community as, as you can muster. I would say you want to have a board of a minimum of 18 to 24 people. And when you can do that, it's, it's, creates all kinds of new energy and enthusiasm within the community.
Thank you, Mr. McNair, Mr. Fable.
Yeah. One of the reasons that I think we're here is the opportunity to examine this proposal to grow golf over a longer period of time, hopefully with the dual goal of break even with no subsidy. In your materials, I'll read it to you, it says, "In addition, the course driving range is designed to be a break-even facility with no subsidy required." One of the critical things, to me at least, is looking at the pro forma and business plan that you will provide. Is that, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. In order for the city to fully understand what product you'll be offering, and whether that product has merit, that business plan is critical, especially if the goal is to have no subsidy.
No question.
Would we receive that business plan and a vision or rendering by your, your organization prior to us having to commit any funds?
Definitely.
Okay. So we would have a chance to say, "Hmm, I looked at the pro forma. It appears that in 12 years, we're on a break-even track. We have to have this staffing group. We have to have this. We have to have that," which we don't have now. We don't have a business plan for our golf right now at Mummware. We tried to, you know, expand golf where we can, but this would have an actual business plan that we could examine and look at, with the goal of having it break even. That's one point. You and I chatted on the phone, and we were, I think, of the idea possibly that the, this new feeder course on its own legs is a great idea. Looking at this, this golf community we have here, the one thing that is missing is the niche opportunity for young golfers. I recently taught my two 20-some-year-old sons to play golf, and I was faced with either belonging to a country club, which I don't, or going to one of the public courses, which I found was way over and above their heads. So if I want to teach my 20-some-year-olds, where do I teach them? There is no feeder course. There is no training course designed to do this. I learned to play on a par three, then migrated to an executive par three, and then migrated to a regular golf course. Now, I need to go back to a par three because I'm getting, just frankly, I, I can't, my swing is like four inches either way. I mean, there's a whole cadre of people, baby boomers, who would find this exciting, especially if they had a par five and some par fours and a par three. I guess my question is, one, do we have an opportunity to examine the business plan and your architect's rendering before we make any decision?
Financially?
Yes, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do you, as a golf professional who's been around, believe that there is, based on your research, a niche market for an executive par three, four slash five in this community?
Yes.
That's, that's what I thought. So there's an opportunity for us to look at the business plan Leon and his group would provide. An opportunity to look at the vision that his architect would provide us before we would have to decide whether or not we wanted to jump in. We would have the benefit of a business plan that we can either agree with or refine. And that business plan, over time, would have the goal of recapturing the capital cost, I would imagine, right?
I would hope.
And that would be in the business plan, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I wanted to say.
Anyone else? Mr. McNair, thank you for coming in. I know you've made a long trip to be here, and we, we bumped you from one, one meeting. Thank you so much for providing us with the information.
Thank you. I enjoyed being here. Thank you.
Mr. Fable, I think we have a discussion of the Chapter 99 program.
Okay. Do we want to discuss this any longer? Because Mr. McNair will eventually want to know what our desire is. So do we wait another month? Or is there three people of interest who's willing to see what the vision will look like in the business plan?
I'd like to hear from either Ernie or Bob, any of their thoughts, or anyone else from staff that, what their thoughts would be at this point. Looks like Ernie may have a thought. I haven't seen that in you before, Ernie.
If I forgot it on the way up, I'm sorry. We do a couple similar things, tennis. We do tennis camps during breaks, operate them all summers. It's fed the tennis programs. Nationally, tennis was going down, but we're seeing some of the busiest years we've had since the 1970s in Bowling Green. Courts are usually, we get calls for more and more court use all the time. I think it's parallel. Commissioner Nash mentioned the skate park. I think it's one of the best things we've ever done in Bowling Green. Gives young people something to do. They can hang out. They've learned new, new things to do. If you look at it, knock on wood, you see graffiti there? No. Do you see as much downtown as you did before that? I don't believe so. It's been positive. I think this has the same possibilities of our mission, which is teaching people how to become active, teaching them different skills. Fits right into our mission. Mr. Fable was right. Do we have a place for a beginner to go in Bowling Green? You can go out Audi to a driving range, but when it comes time to put the clubs in the bag and go to the course, you go to a public course, and chances are, you're going to leave before you finish because you've got the course backed up, golfers complaining, or you're just simply overwhelmed by it. I would love to see this go. You know, I'm going to be leaving in about six months, but this is something in my later, I'd like to become involved with. I think it's just completely worthwhile. I think it's a win-win for the city. And again, it fits the mission of the city of getting people involved, getting them active, teaching new skills, and giving them a place to go. Just a, kind of a side story, I was at the skate park about two months ago, and it was one of my nights to lock up, and I was talking to a gentleman, and I said, he's a new guy, and I said, "What brings you to Bowling Green?" And the guys started laughing, Jim and the other guys. He said, "The skate park." And he had his, works at a factory here, but he had a choice to go to two places. Came to Bowling Green, saw the skate parks, says, "I'm coming here." And like an idiot, I says, "Why, do you have kids?" And he looked at me, like, "What's wrong with you?" He says, "No." He says, "I skate." So it's, it's the same thing. I believe we can give people an opportunity, build it, and I believe they'll come to it. It's going to be active. You're going to have to manage it. You're going to have to grow it. As far as getting the schools, I don't think that's a problem at all. PTAs normally take care of extracurricular activities. They build playgrounds. They fund teams. I think that's something PTAs would look favorably on, especially at such a small cost for such a long time. Lighthouse Academy, that fits their mission 100%. It's 100 yards from the course. I believe they'd be active in it. Parker Bennett Curry, not very far. You know, we have a school bus, too, in parks. We, that's something we'd include in our after-school program, summer program, and pitch and get, you know, kids there. But thanks for the opportunity.
My comment would be, is just in the other issue that we looked at. I think that it would be prudent on us to, to proceed with this. And again, I don't know that, it's almost the same words I used when we had the other proposal. I don't have enough information right now to make a decision. On the other one, after I received the information, I obviously decided one way. But on this, it seems enticing. I would love the, the different aspects about it, but again, I need to know what the data shows. And Mr. DeFebbo's question about when we have to ante up or not do it, I think is an appropriate question. Mr. DeFebbo, you looked at, if you had three that want to move forward, I would like to, I would like to move forward and see what the business plan is and get some figures and...
Yeah. That's the only way to answer Slim's initial question about what was the cost. Given what we've been through recently, I wouldn't bring this here unless I thought there was, it was, one, a good idea substantiated by a professional in the field who independently verified that. Second, there is a proffer that this would be done at a break-even. Third, willing to provide the evidence through a pro forma for us to look at, and we could look at that. And I think it's critical that we miss, get Mr. Aragoni here to talk about the First T. Leon is more of a journalist. Mr. Aragoni is a First T specialist, if I'm correct, and he would give us an overview about the First T program. I don't think you can know the answers until you at least hear Mr. Aragoni about the First T and about the pro forma and the vision. I personally think that there is a need for an executive par three. If not, the legacy we will leave is that Riverview, because of its condition, will continue to decrease in play. And eventually, we will either close it or attempt to privatize it again. That's, that's the legacy.
Well, my issue has been and continues to be that you have, I like the idea of a beginner course. I also like the idea that the, the people that are using it now, that there's, there's a way that they can continue playing down there as well. So it, it has things for me that I really do like. And I know that when you talk about X number of dollars, we're spending X number there so you don't start off from zero on what we're putting down there, even if the number you threw out, Mr. McNair. But anyway, I'd like to move forward, see what we have. I think there's, I have enough interest in it that I would like to do that.
Yes. Hang on, let's stand. Mr. Fable? Hang on just a second. You interested in going forward?
That's, that's your three. Go ahead, Stan.
I just like to say, this would be an opportunity to hear kids from the west side of town and, and other areas that, that need that opportunity. I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't caddying on a golf course where I got my first master's degree. And I really think, I really think that you've got a great opportunity. You need to add civic clubs and, and other groups that will help with this. But you had a guy come up here, in six months, he's going to volunteer his time to probably be your first executive director of this at no cost. And you get people like me with no cost.
I do the course for all.
And you can make things happen. That same golf course in 1970, I remember a helicopter flying in with about 100 kids involved in a junior golf tournament. And there's nothing more than I'd like to see than that opportunity come to all kids now, whether they play or not, but they need that opportunity. And some of them will never get it. We can give all the clinics we want at the Girls Inc., Boys and Girls Club, different places, but it's getting them on the course nationally that is the problem. And this gentleman's here to help solve part of that. So I'm for it 100%. I'll help where I can.
Just for the record, that was Stan England, former director of Boys and Girls Club here.
That's England, like, country, even.
Do you have something else? I know you counted the three, and so we, we clearly have where I and Commissioner Walter, but Commissioner Denning stand on it, but I'd like to hear where you and Melinda stand.
I have no problem with exploring any opportunity to its fullest to try to find a way to make it work.
I think you know my position as far as I want to save money as much as possible. I am not ready to commit to more money, but thanks to Mr. DeFebbo saying we do not have to commit before we review this, I am in favor of reviewing it and would like to do that. And I would also like to, you know, for the city to go on and put their thinking caps on. If we don't do this, how can we, as a city, improve not just golf, but everything and reduce cost without taking anything away?
We've been doing that for the last three years, $4 million worth, but we can continue to do that. That's what we try to do every day. For example, tonight, you have on the agenda a combination of, of two positions in the police department that will save 50 grand in one day. That's not even enough to run the city for one day, though. It's about, what, $75,000 a day, Jeff, to run our city or more? A little more than that. I just want to make sure we're, we're good. Mr. McNair has come up here on his own dime. We appreciate that. I don't think he's pandering a solution, but believes in, in his, his, his values about expanding golf to young people. So I just want to make sure we, we want to proceed with the visioning part. And would you all be open to listening to Mr. Aragoni? Can you arrange that with the First T? Would you all be open to that, hearing from him?
Good. That's, that's a critical part. Then...
Then personally, in order for this to be successful, it has, the idea has to stand on its own. Every chance I get, I run this concept through every golfer I know and say, "Do we need this?" And the answer is, yeah. That's what I hear. But you already have a nine-hole solution, you have an 18-year-old solution, you have private golf through country clubs at various levels of niceness. What we don't have is an executive slash par three and four. And I think it, it fits a critical niche market that could help us reduce the operating deficit that we have.
One thing I would say in this timeline, though, I think first, we need a plan of how River View is going to be remodeled by our architect. That's number one. Once we have that, then we get Mr. Al Aragoni in here after that. Because it's also beneficial to him to see what's going to happen out at River View and what the total package is out there and that atrium area with perfect for life skills education during the summer and all that. So I think we need to first go with our architect and I'll be immediately contacting him. And then we'll follow that with Al from the first tee.
Well, I think we're all saying the same thing. We want more information. I think it's an enticing concept. We want more information and then once we have the information, we'll be able to make a, a good decision.
Anybody else? Chapter 99.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Leon, for coming here. Appreciate it. Brent's going to address you tonight on what is known as a Chapter 99. Just to let you know, Steve Hunter has had some ex parte conversations with us about this issue. And tonight I'm going to ask with your courtesy to remove Municipal Order Number 13 to give Steve's ideas some, some time to distill. But in 2003, the city, always mindful of trying to develop its, its downtown through the Renaissance, whatever program Kentucky offered, put together a plan. This is basically a roadmap for how we are going to improve downtown Bowling Green. That was called a Chapter 99 after reference in the law. Here we are in, in 2012 and the Chapter 99 plan is a little referred to for a roadmap. Maybe it's used for some zoning and some other architectural things, but in terms of a future vision statement, that has been elipsed by, by the TIF district and Chapter 58 group. Brent had the idea that, look, we don't need a couple of dwelling plans out there. And so we wanted to run it by you and see if you were open to the idea of putting this in abeyance. But that said, Brent's going to give you an argument. Let us tell about your stuff.
No, not all of it. Just some of it. I do have copies of the plan that I'll pass out to everybody. As Mr. DeFebo said, this is in reference to Chapter 99. I think the official title is a Historic Downtown Bowling Green Revitalization Plan. I think that's our official local title, but it's reference to Chapter 99 of KRS. It was set up as an opportunity for cities to define an area, declare it as a blighted area and lay out a process for redevelopment in that area. It gave some authority to cities for doing that. It gave us the ability to declare areas slum and blight and declare that as a public interest, interest for condemnation and purchasing and disposition of property. So it gave us some flexibility in that. And if you go back to 2002, whenever this was established, this was the catalyst, kind of the starting port for downtown redevelopment. This was before the TIF district. This was when the city was kind of the driving force. As you go through the memo there, I'll lay out some of the aspects of the plan and it's pretty much, as you read through the plan there, you know, there's a defined project area and you should have in your handouts, there were previously sent two maps. One is the original map, the original land use map, and the second one is amended. The project area never changed and that's kind of the outline, the boundary of the area. As part of the plan also, there was a full listing and you'll see it in, in what I just passed out of what properties could be acquired, would be acquired, or have the possibility of being acquired. I think there's a couple, three listed there and details those out by parcel number, owner, all those types of information. So it kind of says, this is what we plan to do, this is what we plan to buy, this is our final vision, and this is how we're going to go about it. It also lays out some regulation side of it and that's what Mr. DeFebo talked about under the zoning side. It had some use regulations on what would be allowed in those certain zoning areas. It also laid out five general objectives. Create the framework for the Renaissance, as he alluded to, protection of the public in the target area. That's part of the slum and blight public interest portion that I was talking about. Encourage mixed-use development, improve the overall appeal of the area, and develop focal points in the area. The focal points that list Circus Square, the defined expansion of the medical facilities, because this also touches in on the property neighboring Medical Center, and also rehab of the historic Shake Rack neighborhood. It laid out 25 objectives. They're all listed in the plan. I've taken some and, and put them on the memo here. Establish a rehab program. There was a residential rehab program. I actually administered that on behalf of the city whenever I was at Brad. There was never, that one has been started and completed. We haven't funded that in several years. The commercial program, I don't know of one ever actually coming off the ground and being started. Also develop Circus Square, as we all know, that's complete and has been for some time. An elderly housing complex that was done several years ago down in the Chestnut, Third Street area, I believe, as one of our tax credit partner properties. The Heritage Walk, I think parts, parts of that have been completed. And then also there's a list of Sidewalk and Stormwater. I know some of those have been completed. I don't know if all of those have been completed. Going back to the land use plan, you know, it kind of lays out what is here, what we hope to see in the future. So as you go through that, you'll see different aspects for professional, residential, mixed use, public use, those types of different parcels that would be used as you go forward. So the plan is pretty much the, the guideline, the guiding force. There was an update in March of '04 and all these have to go through a public hearing process. The public hearing process is handled through the Planning Commission and then it comes to the City Commission in the form of recommendation and ordinance. There was one amendment in March of '04 reflected a few changes. It really just changed what's going to be purchased. It kind of changed some properties on the acquisition list. It identified properties that were already owned by the city, so that had been purchased in that period of time. It deleted properties that were purchased by the medical facilities and the, towards the river. It identified other properties that the city had planned to purchase. So it kind of updated the list and amended the land use map. So that's really the difference in the maps there between your original and your amended is the changeover to, for Lee Square. Part of this was, part of this plan was also to get federal funding. This was whenever we were getting the CDVG money from the state. That's what paid for Circus Square, Lee Square, those types of things. The elderly housing complex, you know, those types of projects. We are no longer, a community is eligible to apply for those funds. Since this time, we have changed over and are now an entitlement community and so we get our money directly from HUD. So, you know, these types of projects, before we could get, you know, a million dollars for a project, a million dollars for a project, you all have heard me stand here and give public hearings about the cuts in funding that we're getting on the entitlement side. So, you know, these were pre-entitlement. This was all competitive statewide application type things. There was another amendment that had come forward and went through the public hearing through the Planning Commission in September of '04 to make some other changes. It got to the commission and it was, and then it was tabled. The changes at that time were amending the blocks in College and Center for Bowling Green Parks and Rec, the Coomer Little Project, changing 600 and 700 block of center in Kentucky for Skypack, and then also adding two parcels in the 500 block of State and Chestnut for the proposed life skills project at the time. That was tabled at the commission meeting and to my knowledge has never been brought back up since that meeting. So really what you have is, the city was the driving force for a lot of this development at this time. We had, had the plan written, we developed it, we pursued it, we monitored it. Since that time, the city's really not the driving force anymore. We still own some property down there from this time, but the, the driving force of development in the downtown Bowling Green area is the TIF district, the Chapter 58 that group we're all very familiar with. This is a level of regulation that is out there that is, it kind of puts me in a, in a go-between because we've got something that is now eight years old that's never really been touched for eight years. I can't say how accurate the land use map is to the current projects that are out there without a very detailed analysis. So, you know, as staff, we want to come forward and bring this to you, bring this to your attention. I have a recommendation in here to put it in abeyance, this, you know, and that's my recommendation. I'm open to talking with Mr. Hunter on his recommendation, but, you know, I think it kind of puts us in awkward position because we have a plan out here that is, that is approved by ordinance, but it's not really there. You know, times have changed since this time. You know, we're not operating under the same circumstances and the same conditions. So I'm just looking for more direction on how you all want to proceed. I've talked to Kevin about this, talked to Mr. Harmon about this, talked to various, Steve about this, and, and what you all would like to see. Our side of it is, this was the driving force for whenever we were doing it. We're no longer doing it. The abeyance part was, we don't know what five years brings. We didn't know what, where we would be today five years ago. So we felt like that was kind of an in-between. Originally, the recommendation was to, to terminate, to do away with it, but then we, you know, we kind of had the thought of, well, we don't know where we're going to be in five years. We might need this in five years. So that would at least gave us an opportunity. You know, there's a lot of work that goes into creating this. Amending it is, is work, but it's nothing like the creation of it. So this at least keeps it out there. It's a 20-year plan. There is a 20-year timeline on it. So you're talking to 2023, I believe, would be kind of the expiration of this. We've got other Chapter 99 plans in the area. St. Joseph, I believe, has two whenever we did the revitalization, long before my time. And I think there's also one up near Western as part of the Western revitalization project. So. All entertaining questions? I'm running dry. I've been sitting back there for an hour and a half, so.
Can you tell them the practical little problem that caused us to bring them here?
Yeah, this really came up because we had a, a gentleman who was interested, he owned some property in the downtown area, was interested in renting his business out to a, I believe is a car lot.
To what?
A car lot. To, to another person who wanted to open a car lot. The Chapter 99 plan says no vehicle sales in the downtown area. This is where all this kind of spurred from. So then we started looking.
Without conditional use permit?
Without a conditional use permit. This is where all this kind of, kind of came up from. And during the review, you know, he, you know, it was corrected. It is prohibited by the Chapter 99 plan. It's prohibited in the area. And that's under the use regulations that you'll see in the plan that I provided to you. We have car lots in the downtown area. We have, vehicle repair is also prohibited. We have vehicle repair in the downtown area. So this is where I'm talking about. I'm kind of in this in-between of enforcement, because part of my responsibility is to oversee the code enforcement. So it kind of puts me in the in-between of enforcement of, is this what we want to do? If so, that's fine. Is this what we wanted, you know, is this what we wanted to do years ago? Is this still what we want to do? And that's kind of where I'm coming from and, and looking for you all. Steve and I had talked about, and I'll let him talk if he's got anything else to add, on some other options that might be out there, but I'll entertain any other questions before Steve has an opportunity.
If I can, real quick, too, it is probably kind of scary thought, this was pre-Mr. DeFebo, this was pre-Brent. I think almost every staff that had any involvement with creating this is gone. I probably have more history with this 99 than anybody that, that's left here, like I said, which is a scary thought because I wasn't that involved in it. Chapter 99 does have, does create one opportunity that we have never used because Chapter 99 does allow the use of condemnation in this area for, for private development if it's slum and blight removal. But we, this is what, 10-year-old plan? We've never used that. I don't think there's any intent to use that, but now Chapter 99 gives you that authority. Without a 99 plan in place, you can't do that. You're, you're basically, to most, you're buying property at whatever the, you know, if you've got a plan in, within 99 area you want to use, you're to most, you're paying whatever people want without an option to do anything else. But again, we've never, everything we purchased downtown, and we purchased a lot of property under 99 plan. We purchased Block Four, was it? I've got which, where the housing project is now. I mean, we purchased a lot of stuff and never used condemnation for anything. All of Circus Square. But that is one, make sure you understand, that's one tool that Chapter 99 gives you. Without that plan, we won't have. Brent and I did talk and it put Brent's, it put Brent in a tough spot. He's got an ordinance that says to this person who wants to put a car lot downtown, you've got to get a conditional use permit to do it. We probably, if I, you know, put my feet to the sidewalk, I could probably walk this 99 plan area and find a couple of car lots that never came to us for approval. They simply started a car lot, but we've not done anything to, you know, not gone down and said, "You've got to close your doors," and nobody wants to do that. So it's just kind of, you know, whatever we want to do, we just got a plan that basically is staff that did it's not here. The TIF area is pretty much, as Brent and Mr. DeFebo all said, has pretty well swamped this 99 area and they're the major driving force now behind this and not this plan. We don't have any car lots downtown now. I think there's probably at least one. And show you, show you one of them.
And also, vehicle repair is also listed in one of the use regulations and there's a couple of those also.
Isn't one catty corner to Skypack?
On the corner of Sixth and College, Circus Square, Cemetery, Skypack, then at that corner lot, there's a used car lot there.
And our baseball stadium is saying a future industrial site.
Can't you just give us Steve and work it out?
That's why we want, we want to pull it from the agenda and we didn't know Steve had objections, so we want to give him the due courtesy and pull it and meet with him about it, if that's okay with y'all.
Is there anybody else that we need to get in that discussion? So we don't?
I don't know. We're open to whoever you think might be a person we should.
Steve, you know anybody we should chat with? Anyone else we should meet with besides you?
I don't really have an objection. I just have, which is the basic concern. I have one part of it.
Okay. We'll put our ear to the, the rail and see if we hear anything. If that's okay with you.
Anybody have other questions? Anybody have anything? Bring it forward, body.
I will.
You going to wish Western good, you going to wish Western good luck in 10 minutes?
That's true. Bowling Green High and Warren Central play in 10 minutes and so does Western. We wish all our local teams the best. We'll be back at seven. I'm sorry, go ahead.